That's right. Mine's on my front porch.
Where it belongs.
Well, that's all we had until late last week. It really needs to be recharged.
Any, uh...
So you've been looking for your girl tomorrow?
Sort of. I've put on Craig's List. I don't...
What? Are you gonna be doing...
Lots of stuff on page, but all...
Who did you call?
Positive, but...
Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting for Monday, March 9th. Please turn off all your electronic devices as they do interfere with our recording equipment. See if we could have a roll call, please, to establish court.
Harry Meyer?
Yes.
Melissa Green?
Here.
Jerry McClung?
I'm here.
Bob Thomas?
There.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Nikki Schneider?
Here.
We have six.
All right, stand with the president. Let's leave it to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Come on.
Second.
All right. Two items I'd like to add at the very end is one, just a brief note on the auditorium gym remodeling, and also a setting a possible date for the Parks Council workshop. So... Does anybody else have anything?
Is that new business?
Yes.
Okay.
At the very end.
Motion to approve.
Shouldn't take long. I got a motion to approve. Get a second.
Second.
On favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? I got a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we do have a couple of vacancies coming up. We got a vacancy with Parks, and we also have two renewals with Maggie Hayden and Greg Moon for HDC.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Maggie Hayden for position six for the HDC.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
I make a nomination, I make a motion to nominate Greg Moon for HDC.
Second.
Okay, motion second for Greg Moon. Any discussion? All in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us up to our public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes, please.
Thank you. I'm Pat Costner, and I'm here to continue to demystify what I had called the missing money in the Parks budget in 2017. Now, Mr. Huss has said I should have done more research, that it was because there was a gap. And well, yes, that's what I meant by the missing money. There was a gap in when the state started collecting taxes and when they started dispersing them. So, the city council, you levied the first tax, the four-year limit, in March 25th, 2013. And the city received the first of the monthly dispersals in September of 2013, and that was money that was collected in July. So I mention that because I want you to be aware that there is a, you know, a couple of month difference between when the money is collected and when it is dispersed. Now, on March 29th, Director Huss told you, the council, that the one-eighth cent tax for Lake Leatherwood would sunset in September. Mr. Huss was wrong. And if you will go to the second page of your handout and look at the top, September 2017, the city received no tax since the state did not collect such funds during the month of July because the ordinance had expired. If you continue the same thing in October, the city received no tax because of the expiration, and that would have been tax collected in August. Skip on down to November of 2017, again, no tax. So, that money was missing because Mr. Huss had selected the wrong expiration date. The Department of Finance Administration has a number of 30-day limits. So that's what leads to the difference between when it's collected and when it's distributed. So, to my mind, that solves that mystery. It was not... Yes, Mr. Huss was right, that it was not collected, but that didn't tell us what we needed to know. Why was it not collected? And it was not collected because he made an error in selecting the month of expiration. So that's all I want to say about that. And if you'll look at the first, whoops, if you look at the first graph, that's what led me off on this course. You'll see there how substantially different the tax income was in 2017. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ferguson Stewart, 7 Harvey Road. I read, recently read an article in The Citizen, and I wanted to talk about how proud I am of the work I did at Parks and of the commission that we did. When I started, we had a, basically, a legacy system that was doing flatlining. Now we have a world-class mountain bike system. We've got people coming from all over the world to use those systems, and it's a direct result of great people that we have in the Parks today. Those individuals have exemplified what I consider as contributing public service. So I want to say thank you, Parks, and I want to say thank you, council, and I hope that will continue with a wonderful system of Parks in Eureka Springs. So, thank you.
My name's Craig Cox. Members of city council? Ms. Snyder, you were correct at the last council meeting when you stated this is not right and made a motion for my issue to be added to the agenda. However, looking at tonight's agenda, it's not listed. It's very interesting that something was added to the agenda with a vote, has disappeared. It seems that someone continues to suppress my voice, ignore my concerns, and sweep things under the rug. How can you tell me no one is sweeping things under the rug when an item is voted to be placed on the agenda and removed without notice? Has anyone told anybody on the council, "Don't talk about that," or "We're not supposed to know about that," or "That's a civil matter"? What else is being swept under the rug? My issue with the construction on Fuller Street goes beyond Mr. Walker's drive on my property. However, on March 5th, I met with Duane Allen and Chief of Police Brian Young regarding the recent survey of Fuller Street. Mr. Young advised this was trespassing, as some are aware from communications with the municipal league. A phone conference took place between Mr. Young and Mr. Walker, at which time Mr. Walker agreed to move his drive as soon as possible. I am currently awaiting a specific timeframe. The concern and issue I brought to the council was a matter of an approved plan by the Planning Commission. Mr. Mayor, if my concerns are not a city matter, then are you stating that obtaining a permit and/or approval from the HDC or Planning Commission is a formality, and once obtained, it is fully acceptable and allowed to change, cut down, or construct without any repercussion? If my concerns are not a city matter, then are you stating that the city official overseeing construction ensured all municipal codes were adhered to and enforced, and that all parts of the construction were approved? Thank you.
One second. Sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Chris Fisher, and my comments for tonight are titled, "Fixing Parks: A Situation Our City Must Resolve." We are awaiting since last, I'm sorry, since late January to learn the terms and schedule for a workshop to address a series of questions for the Parks Commission that may provoke some interesting answers. Will Parks acknowledge their ongoing deficiency to provide accurate, certified financial reports to the city council, and that these reports are now overdue dating back to June of 2019? Perhaps Parks Commissioners will also explain their oversight of the director's performance to manage their revenues and expenses and to produce accurate financials. Will they perhaps explain why the contracted account and services of Wendell and Associates appears unable to reconcile Parks' ledgers for 2019? At stake within this ongoing inquiry is the need to establish a proper review process that provides reasonable expectations for how the city will continue to authorize the expenditure by Parks of specific tax revenues and clarify how Parks will administer these funds for specific intended uses. This will be complicated. According to the city attorney, neither the city nor Parks are required to regard the master plan for LLCP, as indicated in the votes of 2013 and '17, as he evidently believes that plans are simply conceptual doodlings. This opinion, then, indicates that Parks' use of specific tax revenues is likely discretionary and need not be in accordance with a voted-upon plan and may simply disregard that it will be reviewed and updated annually. How, then, does the city expect to clearly understand how revenues have been properly used to improve the park if an irrelevant master plan has been discarded and financial reports are inaccurate and unreconciled? Lacking answers so far, this appears to be a disingenuous governance, and it's troubling. The city attorney also agrees with the municipal league's current opinion that Resolution 737 properly conveyed authority to Parks to develop soon-to-be-donated private property, which has yet to be formally annexed into the city municipal limits and has not been approved by ordinance to add this new property within the specific inventory of public lands that Parks may improve and care for. So just what exactly is going on? I would suggest that the situation requires immediate and substantial due diligence. Please, let's get our parks fixed. Thank you.
Damon Haney, back in the mic, here to tell you about what's going on with the Eureka Springs Chamber of Commerce and miscellaneous other things. So, I'll title this Tourism in Eureka Springs. So, we've got a big event coming up April 28th. It is called the Tourism Trade Show. Once again, we will be back up at the end of the Ozarks. This year, instead of putting the conference part at the end, we're gonna put it at a luncheon. So it's $20 luncheon, and we are going to have some folks from northwest Arkansas come over and talk about the progress that they're making. I've got some feelers out. We're gonna try and get the new Parks Director here. No promises on that yet, but we're working hard to do it, and try to bring everyone together to kick off this season to say this is how, not only are we gonna be marketing, but how each attraction will be presenting themselves to the outside world. Just try to build some synergy there for 2020. So, looking forward to that. And I think that's all. I'm forgetting something, but I'll call you if I need to. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments. First item of business, the Planning Commission proposal for tree preservation. Get a motion to discuss?
So moved. Second.
All right. I believe you have on your packet, a proposal from the Planning Commission for tree ordinance revision. Ms. Smollett, would you want to, somewhere, I saw, Lord, there you are. I'm looking around everywhere. Sorry. You want to give us a kind of a brief update and where we are on this?
Absolutely. And I'd also like to let the council know that Commissioner Tom Buford is here. He was the person who really headed up all the organization in getting this ordinance to this point. And I wanted to acknowledge him and have him here for any comments that you need. Through our own research and diligence, we came up with our proposal for a new tree ordinance to update what's currently in the book and make it much more reflective of terminology used today, current theories and practices that are newer about tree preservation in other communities and bringing them in in a way that we feel will help our community to consider the new construction. We're starting to have a little bit of a construction boom, and it's easier to be organized ahead of it than trying to catch up with something that's happening, and you don't have effective law to do that with. So, at the last meeting, or two meetings ago, I handed it out, and per the mayor's comments, we did reprint it indicating which portions are new, which portions are changes, and which portions are exactly like they were. So we're available for comment now, or if you would like to send them by email, whatever you'd like to do. So, we're available now if you have any questions for tonight.
Chris Snyder?
I don't know if y'all can do it, or if Chris needs to do it, but would someone please put in plain English what drip line means?
The outside edge of the canopy where the...
Come up here and pretend you're a tree, and just, because this makes no sense to me at all.
Chris Fisher?
Pretend y'all are a tree. You're a canopy.
The drip line of a tree, if I'm a tree, extends to the outer edges of its canopy.
The outer edge of the branches going down.
The growth tips of each limb.
Okay. Okay. So if all three of you are trees, and you have your little limbs out there, it would go from this end down and that end down.
If we overlapped.
It's used as a term to try to protect the feeder root system relative to that particular tree. So construction and activity should try to stay outside of a drip line when it's possible.
Okay. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. McClung?
Yeah. Can you repeat what you said, what was old ordinance and what's new ordinance? Did you not mention to that?
Yes.
On this, is that on the handout we got here?
If it's an underlined section, it's a revised portion of the existing ordinance. If it's in italics, it's new code. And if it's in plain type, then it's continuing. I don't think you have the newest copies. They should be single-spaced. They were emailed out last week.
This is from the ninth.
Okay. This would be the one that was emailed out next week, that the mayor wanted something to indicate what was new and what was continuing.
This is it? Says emailed the sixth.
No, it's this one that was emailed last week. I'm not sure what...
Yes, I believe the sixth was last week.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I did not know that. Just saying trees. Yes.
So, I mean, what, you know, is, what is, underlined is old ordinance. Is that the total of the old ordinance?
No, what is underlined is, oh, go ahead. Revised.
We took the old ordinance and started, kinda used it as a framework, but we added to the old ordinance. So some of the ordinance is gone, and some of it's been replaced by the new ordinance. So basically, you could just throw the old ones out and say, "This is what we propose as a new..."
What was so wrong with the old ordinance? Tell me that.
Well, the old one has some terminology in it that didn't really apply like one. It's, we have a criteria. You can't cut a tree down without permission of Bozeman if it's more than 50 years old. We can't really tell how old a 50-year-old tree is unless somebody brings a picture in or something saying, "This was taken in 1905, and here's the tree." We didn't really have a section about replacing trees. If you want to cut one tree down, somebody want to cut a tree down in front of the house, but they had room behind the house to plant two more trees, that wasn't in there. So we couldn't require a person... Sometime we want to approve a tree being cut down, if they replace a tree, but that wasn't in the ordinance. So the new ordinance hasn't been in it. So there are things like that. They just updated the ordinance basically.
That's two. Is there...
Relating this to subdivisions, the latest subdivision going in on Pivot Rock, they cut down a number of trees to put the road in. And just because of the generosity and his willingness to work with the city, the owner's going to be replanting 200 trees, not this spring, but next spring after the construction is completed. That is something that would not be required in any way. Or the replanning of green spaces, things like that have never been required.
Okay.
If you have the ordinance there, look on page six of the draft.
What section?
Six.
Is it page six of the draft?
Folder or the email?
Page six. The one I gave, the one we gave out six weeks ago is the folder.
Page six?
This is the chart.
The folder.
We handed out a folder six weeks ago with the profile draft in there.
Or if you have the new one, it's the chart.
Yeah, look in that little green thing there. Look at page six.
How about this? Is it this chart?
Yes.
Okay. And what am I looking at in this chart?
Dangerous.
I'm not sure what you're looking at on the chart, but if you'll take the little green folder right there that we painted out six weeks ago, and look on page six of it.
Oh, that chart?
It's page six on both of them.
But on this section, we kinda enlarged the criteria for retaining a tree, for removing a tree, or supporting a tree. And this came based on people coming to us at Bozeman and saying, "We want to do so-and-so, and so-and-so." And a lot of times, what they want to do did not fit the old ordinance. So as we listen to people in the last several years come in with comments or requests to cut trees down, we enlarged the criteria for keeping trees, removing trees, and made it a little more comprehensive, so we had better guidelines to go by.
Also, the state of Arkansas in their tree guide has listed trees that are invasive and from foreign countries and such, that they want to get out of the forests and such. So what we want to do is if somebody is going to be going ahead and cutting those, we want to ensure that they plant trees that are native to the area or on their acceptable list, and not replanning things like breadfruit pears or...
Corolla trees.
...trees that should not be encouraged to be replaced. And we didn't have a way to do that without this.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, this, this is just a general opening comment. You gave us this about, what, a month ago?
Six weeks.
Six weeks ago.
I went through it, and I marked everything I wanted to talk about. Last week, you sent me an annotated version. So I had to go back through this one to be sure that it was the same as that one, and then I had to mark on this one. Today, we get a compacted annotated edition. I think it's inappropriate to ask this council to discuss something when there's three different...
Well, we weren't aware of the compacted version.
Right.
And the annotated version was done at the request of the mayor.
But right now, we have three in existence, and it's obviously confusing, you know, some people at the table. So I would, you know, I just want to go on record as saying I think it's inappropriate to ask us to look at three different ordinance.
We handed out six weeks ago a draft of the ordinance.
Correct.
After that, the only thing we did was the request of the mayor.
Right.
We did not...
Oh, I'm not...
The mayor would come out and change everything.
And let me see. We didn't condense it, Mr. Thomas. What I asked them to do, and they didn't change it. They just went and changed the italics and underline and left it sent, so we could see what was existing and what hadn't been. The words haven't changed.
But now there's a compacted version.
There is not a compacted version.
Well, what do you call it? Ziploc version or whatever?
This annotated version is the same version that was sent out that we had. And I'm not sure about six weeks ago. I don't know how that one compares. I didn't compare it to this. Is it similar? I don't know. Mr. Thomas, you went through. Are they the same?
The one that was original.
The first two were. Whatever this third one is, I don't know what you want to call it.
Yeah, we weren't aware of that.
We're not aware of the third one.
All right. Ms. Adam Clerk?
What's in your packet today is the same thing that was emailed on Friday. The spaces have been taken out, and it's printed on both sides of the page to go from 14 pages to five pieces of paper. It is the same document that you received on Friday.
Correct, except that it does make referring to page numbers difficult, as we, you know. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
The section, the code section, that has continuity throughout all that you've received.
Oh, I appreciate that.
75602 is still 7540.
I appreciate that, but he just referred us to page 10, and when you've got three different versions, page 10 doesn't make a lot of sense. It would be nice if we had one version in hand to look at before the meeting started, that we could trust was the version we were gonna talk about.
This was mailed out last week.
Correct.
And what you have in your packet today is the same.
Except for page numbers.
The info is the same.
They're just printed on front and back.
I understand that.
Same page numbers.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
I'm sorry. Okay. In the folder that we got back in January, I have little red comments on almost every single page. I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one of those who have gone through it. This is extremely lengthy, convoluted, and wordy. We need to work on this together, so I would like to make a motion that we schedule a workshop with planning and council in regards to this tree ordinance only, and include Chris, and I don't think you have any other people?
No, just Chris.
Okay. And include Chris. So I would like to make the motion that we schedule a workshop to work on this, because we really need to be able to sit down face-to-face and work this out.
Say it.
All right, motion made to defer this to a workshop. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Thomas?
Just, could we please identify which version we're gonna deal with, so we can talk about it?
Well, let's go with the folder, because they did the most comprehensive work there. It's easier to go through.
And they're pretty.
And they're compact. So everybody bring your folder.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so moved.
Can we set a date?
Uh, can we set a date with the Planning Commission? Y'all need to... All right.
Or would you like us, we usually meet on the fourth Tuesday of every month, and we hold the second Tuesday open and reserved where we have the space available to us.
Y'all want to meet on second Tuesday of the month?
That would be great.
Which month?
April. No, April.
Are you talking about April? Is that what I heard?
No.
That would be the next one.
Of March.
That's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. Oh, the 24th?
No, second Tuesday? Oh.
Tomorrow's the 10th.
24th of March.
24th.
Yes, my dyslexia is in high gear.
24th of March, okay with it?
24th of March is available.
Okay, okay. Have a good time.
Let me see.
Six o'clock?
That's a regular...
Tomorrow's the second Tuesday.
Regular meetings, the first time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay.
Which is made at your regular Planning Commission meeting on the 24th at six o'clock.
That's fine. We're holding our meeting tomorrow. I was mistaken, so the 24th is fine.
So you did like I did.
All right. Okay.
I'm an excuse. I have my own request.
I've got dyslexia.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to our next item. Discussion of having three commissions quarterly reports on the agenda. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Green, motion to discuss.
Second.
All right.
What I'm suggesting is that we automatically are set up now that in April, we would have on the agenda discussion of the first quarter reports from the three commissions that report to council. And in, I think it's July, we would have on the agenda, the second, and I'm talking about the second meeting of each month, second meeting of April, second meeting of July, we would have on the agenda discussion of second-quarter reports. In October, we would have on the agenda second meeting, discussion of third-quarter reports. And I have to ask Mr. Weaver, can we schedule something in 2029 when we don't know who will be here?
You can schedule it, and it can later be changed by the council.
Well, then I would suggest that on the January... Okay. Well, then, I would suggest that on, on the January 2021, we put on the second meeting agenda discussion of fourth quarter reports.
Get a motion. Do y'all have a second?
No, second.
All right, discussion. Ms. Harmon?
This is CAPC, parks and hospital, correct?
No. Cemetery, parks, and CAPC.
Cemetery, parks.
And CAPC.
How come only those three?
All right, Ms. Thomas, yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that we can get something from hospital too, as we're in transition?
Uh, I'm sure we can.
Cemetery.
Cemetery. Does he need to amend his-
No, at this point, no. I think, let's see, let's leave it at this for right now.
Leave that what?
With the quarterly reports on there, because the hospital is going to be separate. We're going, we wouldn't be able to do it at this point in time, because of the transition. And, also, let me just work with the hospital, because that's a separate entity totally.
Okay, so-
Okay. Let's leave it with the, with the three, as Mr. Thomas has suggested. Parks, cemetery, and CAPC. All right, any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Green?
Is this going to be like written reports, or is the chair going to be here?
Um, I'm going to have written reports-
Okay.
...available. That's what I'm going to be suggesting we get, so.
Okay.
All right, yes, ma'am.
That's going to include their financials, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so Bob, so what you're saying is, you want this on our agenda on these time periods, or you just want us to be handed the report on this time?
No, we're supposed to consider them at the table.
So, no, so you want it on the agenda, so we can discuss, what, oh, they took any dollars?
Review them. Review is probably a better word than discuss. We have to, we should review them.
Okay, so that would mean we get the reports, sit there and review it right then and there, as opposed to getting, say, the meeting before?
Oh, I would hope we would get them before.
Okay.
Now, you read, okay, we're going to be just reviewing the reports. We're not accepting, we're not approving or anything else, we're just reviewing. The council is not there to approve them.
Right.
Well, yeah, but we still need to be able to read ahead of time.
Right. Okay. Any, yes, ma'am?
I just want to make sure, that we'll have somebody here from each of those commissions if we have questions, correct?
Yeah, we'll have somebody here.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor, second to the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Brings us to our third item, summary, Mr. Weaver, of the process involved for making properties gifted to the parks, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss, second. Yes, that's Mr.?
Mr. Weaver?
As I understand the request, kind of outlining that first, you want a, how it happens when land is to be placed with parks, if it is made by gift.
To this, that, this, just, this is an error. It should be saying gifted to the city, and then made a part of parks. That was my motion.
Well, a lot of the parks land, and a lot of the gifts that are made, are made with the contingency that they be given to a particular purpose. All the reservations for the springs, as I understand it, are given to us to use as parkland at this point, with the stipulation in there that if they're no longer park use, they'll revert to the federal government. And, since I've been the city attorney over the last 18 years, there's been a couple of other pieces of property, namely, probably what sparked a lot of this, the property out by Leatherwood that is being added. In the specific grant of the property, in the deeds specifies it's to be used as park property. If it's not park property, it once again reverts to the previous owner. And, there's another piece of property about three blocks down here, I believe, that's the same way. And, there's another piece, I believe, over on the other side of town that was dedicated for a tower, or for a water area in the last few years. And, all those have in their specific grants that they're to be used for that purpose, and when the city takes in that agreement to accept it, the city doesn't have to accept land. But, if it accepts the land, and that reservation's in there, you're accepting the terms of what that deed says. We can't suddenly decide, well, we're going to take this piece of property that you offered us to build a park on, and we're going to build a jail, or we're going to build a new fire station, or we're going to build a new city hall. Because the reservation in that deed will activate, and the deed will transfer the property back to the original giver in most instances. Now, if that reservation isn't in there, and a piece of property becomes available for gift from someone, whether they be a citizen or whether they just be somebody who's kind-hearted, and they want to buy a lot and say, here to the city, and the city wants to make a park out of it, then the city would have to determine that that's the best use, because there's no reservation in the deed itself. For most of the times that we receive gifts, there's already a reservation of what that property is to be used for. And, by accepting it, we're accepting the terms under which it's offered. And, if we reject those terms at any time in the future and try to turn it into something else, we're potentially handing it back to the original owner. Or, they're more likely their heirs or successors.
Ms. Harmon?
I guess I misunderstood what we were talking about. I thought, I know it doesn't say written summary, I just thought we were going to get something that was not just, even though he explains it well, for reference, I thought we were going to get a reference, a written reference as to how, what the process was. So, is there a chance we could get a written summary, just so we have a guideline, so that we are all on the same boat as far as what the process is? I mean, it's kind of standard, right? It sounds like it's standard.
Try it.
Get a piece of property, can you provide that to us, just so we have it?
If the city wishes it, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I didn't bring the deeds with me, but I thought they, the deeds referenced restricting it to pedestrian usage. I didn't see anywhere in the deed that it said, this will be a part of Lake Leatherwood. It said pedestrian usage such as bicycling, hiking, walking, et cetera. That was, that was the way the deed read, I thought, all four of the deeds.
I don't know. I don't have a copy of the deed either, so I can't answer that. Ms. Green?
When, I remember when we did Resolution 737, and we were taking the property into the city, and I remember us talking about it very clearly, that it would be put into Lake Leatherwood. It wasn't with that deed, and, and that deed also said, it didn't say anything about a park or Lake Leatherwood, it just said for human use for free. And, I was always under the impression that we would be annexing it, or whatever we have to do to put it into Lake Leatherwood. I mean, I'm not trying to say, no, it shouldn't be in Lake Leatherwood, it should. But, I don't feel we have legally done this, and I would like to have the city explore doing this, what I feel would be right, and putting it in there, so that there's never any doubt, we're not going to end up in a lawsuit because of it. I just don't think we've done all the steps.
I don't have the actual deed that we recorded with the county, but I did see multiple versions as it was being prepared, and one of those versions at least did say it was to be directly into the park.
Well, I have the ones that are on record, and I don't remember any references.
It may not be in the, in the final draft. They were drafted by the other parties.
And, there also seems to be a misconception that just because the city has a property doesn't mean that it has to be annexed. We have a lot of property that's not annexed.
I understand that.
And, it doesn't have to be annexed to be a part of Lake Leatherwood.
Right.
Okay.
And, because if you annex it, that brings in a whole different scenario of requirements and responsibility on there. Ms. Snyder?
I'm going to remind everybody again, keep in mind on the wording, if you make it part and parcel of Lake Leatherwood, if and when we would ever cease to properly use Lake Leatherwood, it goes to the federal government. Lake Leatherwood is ours while we use it. If we quit or choose to not use it, it is no longer ours. So, if you tie land into it, all you're doing is expanding their property. All we have to do is accept it as a city park. It doesn't have to be part and parcel of Lake Leatherwood. Keep that in mind, please.
Ms. Green?
We accepted it, and I have the deeds too, we accepted it as a piece of the city property that would be used for humans at no charge.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian, all right. At any time, it was Lake Leatherwood in it, and if you look in the master plan, it specifies the legal definition on pages da-da-da-da-da with the deeds. These deeds have never been added into the master plan to go along. All I'm saying, I'm, I'm not trying to say I don't want it in Lake Leatherwood, I just think that we should really look and see if we've done this right, and if we haven't, I feel we need to take the proper steps to put it into the park legally.
I think we've, and we've asked Mr. Weaver several times if we have done this right, if we've done anything in error. And, again, we're taking your question, are we, have we done anything wrong, Mr. Weaver? Is there something we need to do to clarify?
To the best of my knowledge, we've not done anything improper. If someone believes we have done something, I don't want to invite a lawsuit, but that's what lawsuits are usually about, is to show that there is something improper. As far as I'm aware, though, there is nothing improper about what's been done.
Mr. Meyer? Well, Bob, you were at, you were talking to Lanny down there in Little Rock about this, what did he say?
He said, his fourth opinion, or what? He said in Little Rock that if, if we had made a trail from one piece of property to the other piece of property, that made them one piece of property. That was his, Little Rock.
If we do a little resolution that says, okay, we're going to use this like it's part of Lake Leatherwood, maybe that will make people feel better.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to ask Tim, Tim, your opinion that we have not done anything improper, would you maintain that opinion if you see the deed, and it does not say anything about Lake Leatherwood? It only references pedestrian activities, and when I say walking, hiking, block, that's in the deed, it says pedestrian activities, comma, such as walking, hiking, la-la-la. It does, so would that change your opinion if those deeds don't mention Lake Leatherwood?
No, not if they have the walking language in there.
That would make them part of Lake Leatherwood?
If they're being used, as they're being used for trails, it sounds to me like that meets what you were told by the municipal lead, that if it is joined into our system, it is parked there up.
I believe it mentioned trails too, didn't it, Mr. Thomas, in the deeds?
No.
I just said walking, maybe it said walking trails, hiking trails, maybe, I don't know.
I think it said mention trails.
Yeah.
Because it mentioned biking, hiking-
Right.
On there. Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right. All right, go on to discussion of monthly reports, police and fire council meetings. Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, Mr. Meyer? Well, a big chunk of our budget is the police and fire department, and, you know, I got this emailed to me, a report from the police chief, but it'd be nice if the police chief was here, so that we could talk to him about all these crimes and so forth. And, the fire chief too, because we need to know what's going on with our tax dollars. We should have a monthly report from every single department that's spending our tax dollars. And, the department heads should be here. I mean, we provide them gas and a car to go home with every day, even all the way to Holiday Island. Surely, he can come here at six o'clock on a Monday evening. Ms. Snyder?
Harry, I have no problem with us getting like a monthly or quarterly report, but let's not micromanage. We don't need to know with them coming in here and telling us how many drunks were arrested, how many car wrecks there were, how many people, we don't need that, we're, we're not here to micromanage, we're here to help run the city, and we don't need to be doing their job. Now, if something comes up, and believe me, if somebody in town is really upset about what they've done, we'll know, and we can bring that up. But, we don't need to be having them show up every time we have a meeting, so they can say how many arrests or jails or anything else that they've done. Just let them do their job.
Part of their job is reporting to the council.
Fine. So, like I said, a monthly or quarterly report is fine. We don't need them coming to the meeting and going through every line item, well, we arrested this many people, gave this many speeding tickets. We don't need that, that's micromanagement. We need to stay clear of that.
I make a motion that we require all department heads to come monthly with the report. On here, second, the motion failed for like a second. I would like to report, we've tried this before, and I have to agree with, with Ms. Snyder on this micromanaging. We'll get into the business administration. That's administration, that's not legislative. Ms. Harmon, do you have something?
I, I'm, I, I'm just trying to figure out what you don't have on your report that you need. And, I'm not, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out-
Can I say that we didn't get any report, monthly reports last year at all? We got every, all of our report after the end of the year.
Okay, I'm just asking. I mean, I got the report.
I will provide you, and I apologize for not giving that to you.
I mean, if it's a timely matter, if you're looking for that.
But, I am not comfortable with having them come up here where you're going to dissect their reports into what they've been doing on arresting people. This is an administrative-
I'm not talking about digest, dissecting, I'm talking about, well, let me see. I see we've got-
Your motion failed for a second. Thanks for the lecture. All right, anything else? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so, Mr. Meyer, are you saying that you will see to it that we get quarterly reports at least from all departments?
I'll get you the monthly reports from the police.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't send those out to you, I thought I had in the past.
Never gets-
I will get those to you.
We've had them on and off over the years.
Yeah, all right. Yes, ma'am.
Do you need me to make a motion that we get a monthly report?
No, that's an administrative issue that I can do.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I'll take care of that. And, I apologize, I didn't do that before, so, it's my fault on that. So, get, okay, we're on to unfinished business with the ordinance number-
No, no, your gems.
No, that's, oh, I'm sorry, that is a new business. Auditorium remodel. We, unfortunately, today was the opening of the bids, and we did not receive any bids. We have, we distributed them, we advertised in the statewide paper, we did in the local paper, we advertised also with Dodge Report, Construction News. We contacted individuals. It's just a busy time for people to do work. It's in a big project on here. I have since then, I, one of the contractors I talked to out of Harris- I have since then, one of the contractors I talked to out of Harrison said that he would like to, to do the project, but he just didn't have the time at this point in time. So, he is going to give me a time schedule and see when he might be able to get to it and give it us a price. So we can, since we've advertised, I'm going to see the price he comes up with, if it's within our budget, and at that point, we can, we can negotiate with him and see. Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that we could re-advertise, so to speak, and put on there? Look, when is their slow season, winter? I mean, could we put a time, can we legally put a time period on? We need.
The general contractors take their work as they come, and they're, it's a busy, they're busy.
Okay, so we can't say, planning for next winter.
And they said they're so busy right now that they're not.
Well, I suppose if we can do it like, so, planning for next late fall or winter.
We can, I'm, what I'm suggesting and what I'm finding out is, I'm going to bring back to the council a report from this, this other contractor and see what his time schedule is. If he can dig it to it, you know, within the next three months and the price is right, then I'd recommend that we negotiate with him. If he can't get to it for six or eight months, then we might as well wait. But again, you can't advertise and say, I mean, we can advertise and say the bids are due in eight months, but general contractors don't operate that way. I mean, you just, you know, they're thirty days out.
We can't just basically give an idea of, we're looking to have this worked on next fall.
General contractors take the jobs as they come.
Okay.
And they're not going to give you a price and say, here's a price that's good for next, till next fall.
Okay.
You know, that's like trying to remodel your house.
Okay.
Ms. Harmon?
So are you saying that when the bid, when the paperwork goes out and the advertising starts, you, you don't have to put a deadline on as to when they have to respond?
You have to put a deadline on when they have to respond.
And what is that?
That was today.
No, no, I mean, what I'm saying is, if I, if we put a deadline out there to December 31st of 2020, we could do that, correct?
You can do it. I'm not sure you're going to get any more bids. I have, I have never, in my fifty, I don't want to say fifty, but let's say forty years of construction experience, I have never put out an advertisement for bid.
I was sixty.
Mr. McLemone?
Ah, just two things. One, if, if, if things continue in the economy the way they are, it may be a moot point anyway, because, two, one, there'll be plenty of contractors if the stock market continues its, its decline, why, there'll be plenty of contractors in six months. Two, we won't have the money. So, you're better off waiting for a little bit and see how things shake out anyway. Things are real unstable right now.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, the other item was setting a date for Parks Workshop. And I think what, let me see, I was looking for, and I lost my notes here, what, the nineteenth? The nineteenth of this month, which is Thursday at 6:00 p.m. March nineteenth.
I won't be here, but I'm, you know, I'm not critical, I don't suppose.
Well, I mean, we don't have to do it on the nineteenth, that's just one of the dates that's available. The twenty ninth or the twenty sixth, I, I won't be able to do it. I might be able to do it on the six o'clock.
The nineteenth is one of three days that I'm available.
Would you be able to do it on the twenty sixth, Ms. McLemone?
No.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be here then, I'll just.
Wait. We have, we have a, do we have a city council meeting on the twenty third?
Yep.
And then we have the planning thing on Tuesday?
Yep.
We have the CAPC on Wednesday, and you want to do the twenty sixth too?
What? Let's go for broke.
Four days in a row?
So, hell, why not?
Act like it's.
Well, I mean, I mean, that's, it's just dates that are available. Or we can wait till April, but I mean, the twenty sixth, that's.
Let's get it done this month.
Is everybody okay with the twenty sixth?
Sure.
Me.
All right.
Are they going to, Butch, are they going to have a workshop to work on our questions? I think that was in your.
They have the questions. I think they have most of them answered. I think they're meeting tomorrow night, they'll probably go over that. I don't know for sure. I can't speak for the parks.
Okay.
But they do have the questions.
Is this at six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yep. Here in the auditorium, okay. On the twenty sixth, six o'clock.
And you said they might be meeting tomorrow night?
I think they are meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
They are meeting tomorrow night, so, and they do have the questions, and I, Mr. Huss said they had, he thought they had most of them answered, so.
Is that at the Parks, Parks Building?
I don't know.
Well, CAPC is here.
We'll have more room here, won't we?
CAPC has a workshop.
They'll be here, we'll be meeting here. The workshop will be here.
But isn't it planning tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night is, oh, that's Tuesday, I'm looking on Wednesday.
I've got.
I've got.
I've got Parks.
I don't have them written down.
Well, I don't know. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know when they're meeting.
I can ask tomorrow.
I think their meeting is tomorrow night. You have a meeting tomorrow night? Okay, then it's not, maybe it's the next one, it's Tuesday. Anyway, we're on for the twenty sixth, no matter what.
All right, okay. Thank you, Butch.
All right. All right, that gets us to the unfinished business for ordinance 2294.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Ms. McLemone?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 22.
Ninety-four?
Ninety-four, on its third reading by title only.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. McLemone?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Orders number 2294, an ordinance vacating an alley between block three and block nine and east of Angle Street in the Magnetic Bay survey.
Ms. McLemone?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance number 2294 on its third reading.
Second. Motion second, discussion?
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. McLemone?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Zero?
All right, thank you. That brings us to agenda setting. Ms. Green?
I'd like to put a discussion of commission meetings and workshops, all of them always being held at the auditorium.
Why? I'll second that. Just a discussion.
Okay. Ms. Harmon?
I just have, I'd like to add a discussion about the city employee handbook and some of the verbiage that is in there currently.
Second.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Council comments, Mr. McLemone?
I was fortunate enough to get to go to the auditorium here, to come to the auditorium here this past Saturday night and see Ray in a sleep at the wheel, and it was a great show, pretty good crowd in attendance, and a lot of fun. And springtime's coming, we got great shows coming up later, so enjoy this beautiful building and all the great music that's in it. That's all.
Mr. Meyer?
My point about getting the police chief and the fire chief here was not about micromanaging departments. It was about getting what's happened in those departments on the record and in the minutes so that the citizens know what's happening. That's all.
Ms. Harmon?
I actually just want to thank the hospital commission for having the workshop, I believe it was this week, wasn't it?
Last week?
Was it last week? Okay.
This bid Monday?
It's already blurred by me, but I do appreciate them having the individuals there that could answer the questions that were, that were brought up. So, I just want to thank them for, for making that happen.
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Well, I agree with that. We are going to be so happy when our hospital is set up like it should be, like it used to be. Just one quick note about the auditorium clocks, we had a time change. I don't know who's in charge of that. Okay, I wanted to announce that Saturday night at the Legion Hall, which is the junction of 23 and 187, they will be doing a St. Patrick's Day dinner, even though that's what, the fourteenth? They will be doing a dinner, it's only five dollars a person, it's, everybody's making the food to donate it. It'll open at five, they'll start eating at six, and afterwards, there'll be games and karaoke, and it'll be a lot of fun. So feel free to come. And if you want, you can celebrate my anniversary on St. Patrick's Day, thirty-seven years. Ooh. Except that's next week. I would like to congratulate my marine son on his second grandchild and my number eight great-grand that was born Saturday. We are very happy. That's it.
Ms. Green?
Nothing.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I just want to address a couple of the comments that were made during the public comments. First of all, we don't vote on agenda items. As you can see, it's just somebody makes a motion and somebody else seconds it. So if that was removed from the agenda, other than the two people that made the motion made the second, the rest of us would, don't have anything to do with it. We didn't put it on the agenda and we didn't take it off.
Okay.
There was no vote. And second, with all, Chris, with regards to your statement about, you know, parks and that and all this stuff, I really think that, that this, that the commission is working to fix some mistakes that they have made, and that this, this council has, is working to bring everything up to the forefront and deal with it and move on from there. So, you know, it may not be happening as quick as you want it to, but I think we're going to address all of the concerns that you have brought up.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. First of all, I want to wish Terry McLemone happy birthday.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So kind, so kind.
Also, coming up this weekend, we have the St. Patty's Day parade, two o'clock on Saturday. They'll be starting out there at the Rowdy Beaver, but actually be forming up at the library and coming on down Spring Street at two o'clock. On the next day, the fifteenth, we've got the talent show, we got talent at 2:30 p.m. at the auditorium. This is Carroll County Music Group fundraiser to send kids to music camp all over the United States. So please come and support our county kids and their music venues. And then on the twenty first, we'll have the Victorian Classic, starting off at seven o'clock in the morning till 2:00 p.m., and starting at the community center, going back to the Crescent Spring and back to the community center again. And that's all I have. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'm favored.
All right.